Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Carver Planning Board meeting of April 25, 2023. We will be compensing the meeting at 7:05 PM. Our first order of business is reorganization of the board, I believe.
A pledge of allegiance.
Very good. Thank you very much. If we'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Kevin. It's a lot on my mind. I don't see that we have reorganization. Okay, all right. Seeing as this is my first time doing it, Mr. Bott, is there some...
Well, the good news is we have a chair to run the meeting.
Yes.
It may change in a minute, but as the chair, you're the person who's calling for nominations. Last time we did this, the sitting chair had retired.
That's right.
Your meeting is calling for nomination.
All right. So we're going to open the chair. We'll accept motions for the position of chairman of the Carver Planning Board for the next calendar year, or the year.
I would like to make a motion to recognize Connie Shea as the chair.
And I would like to second.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any other recommendations anybody else would like to make this evening? Seeing none, I will open it for discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Deion.
Mr. Deion says aye. Mr. Shea, aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sordillo says aye.
And as I'm the focal point, I will abstain from this vote. Thank you all very much.
You almost had your name spoken. You were so close to having your name spoken.
Then Mr. Shea will say aye.
You don't. You want to work towards something for next year.
I think it would be more appropriate if I stand from voting for myself.
For the year one.
All right. Our next order of business is to open nominations for the vice chair of the Carver Select Board for the coming year.
It should be planning board.
I'm sorry.
Planning board.
Planning board. What did I say?
Let's not look.
Oh, my gosh. It must be the chair.
It's the road.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Robinson.
We... Ms. Sordillo nominates Mr. Robinson. Do I have a second for that? I will second it for the purposes of discussion. Do we have any further nominations for vice chair of the planning board for the next year? I would like to nominate Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Deion. Open it for discussion. Seeing none. And this is one of those rare cases where you are allowed to vote twice, and whoever has the most votes at the end wins. So I will be taking votes on Mr. Robinson, and then I will be taking votes on Mr. Gatski, and whoever has the most votes will be vice chair. The first motion is for Mr. Robinson for vice chair of the planning board of Tana Carver. Mr. Deion?
Nay.
Mr. Gatski?
Nay.
Mr. Robinson?
Yea.
Yea.
Ms. Sordillo. So it's... Boy. It's a tough choice here. You both have such good qualities. Kevin's got experience. John is getting his experience. He's done a good job the past year, and I'm going to have to lean towards Mr. Gatski. So that's three to two for Mr. Gatski.
Two to three.
I'm sorry. So I'm going to vote no. So it's three votes no, two votes yes.
Two to three.
The next nomination is for Ms. Gatski. So Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Congratulations, Ms. Gatski.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is to establish the secretary for the coming year. The chair will accept nominations for the position of secretary of the planning board for the next year. Do I have any nominations?
I will nominate Kevin Robinson.
Thank you. I will...
Second it.
And second nomination made by Ms. Sordillo, seconded by Mr. Deion. Do we have any further nominations? Seeing none. I'll open it for discussion. Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
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 And Mr. Shea says aye. I want to thank everybody. All of these positions are very important and highly valued, especially to the chair of the board for the amount of work that needs to be put into all of these positions and the ability to be able to step up when needed. So thank you all. Our next order of...
Just for a clarification.
Yes.
Who was the second on Kevin? Is the clerk?
Mr. Deion. Our next order of business is confirmation vote. Chapter 61A, map 14, lot 10, zoning residential agricultural, Walker Road, Mr. Fernandez is what I'm guessing.
If I may?
Yes, please.
So the planning board had previously voted to not cite their right of first refusal in chapter 61A parcel for the Walker Road for any of these properties. There was a bit of a glitch to start with. Most people believe that it didn't need to be pulled out of 61A anyhow because it was residential for agricultural, and that is an exempt under 61A. However, when they sent the paperwork, they sent the paperwork for the entire parcel, this one on the screen. And what they really should have sent was this one for lot one. So previously, the board voted to not subject writer first refusal for that little pink dot there. Since the board had voted previously in favor of this, when the paperwork came back, just to keep anybody's closing up, I signed the paperwork again. And tonight is a confirmatory vote for the board to say what we voted the last time, February 14, that we weren't going to cite writer first refusal on this Walker Road property for Mr. Fernandez. It's just back to the board to confirm your vote from February 14. So that's a simple motion to waive the town's right of first refusal on chapter 61A.
The chair will accept a motion to waive the right of first refusal for chapter 61A land for lot one, Walker Road, map 14, lot 10, Walker Road, lot one.
Correct.
Correct.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
Second it.
Seconded by Mr. Deion. This is a vote we've already taken, and this is a confirmation vote on that. Is any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That would have been very awkward if it had gone a different way.
Our next order of business is an approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to show a reconfiguration of lots, and lots shown without adequate frontage are designated as being not a buildable lot without further zoning relief to the extent such lots are conveyed in reliance of the plan endorsement. Assessors map 50, lots 3, 8, 9, and 10A, located at 40 Fuller Street, zoning residential agricultural. Please, if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Greg Sampson with Wumblebon Dickinson. I'm the attorney for the applicant on this matter. And I think the board's aware that this property is subject to approval for use of solar, and the purpose of the plan is to essentially remove interior lot lines to make it consistent with the project's lease line.
So is this originally one piece of land?
It's in... It's actually, it's in two separate ownership entities, and it's five different parcels of land as conveyed. So we're consolidating the parcels, and we have a portion of land that's remaining. So even though technically, from a zoning perspective, the land in common ownership is treated collectively, but because there's still interior parcel lines recognized, we wanted to consolidate those to facilitate the project's layout.
None of these property have frontage on a way?
That's correct. The remaining land has... All of the property has access rights through easements, but none of them have... None of the parcels have frontage.
How is this going to affect the solar? Is this going to remove the frontage required for solar?
The frontage will still be provided by the access rights, the easements, but it should not affect the project at all, and only to the extent this is... The only thing it would eliminate is the interior setbacks between the ownership lines, but we also have to take... We'll have to take a further step to consolidate the ownership, to address the ownership issue, so that the interior lot lines with the setbacks are eliminated as well. So this is step one, and then we have an ownership transfer that will need to be done to make it effective.
So these lots are not all owned by a singular entity?
Correct. There's two different entities. They're in two different entities with common ownership of those entities.
It's in common ownership.
Johnson Brothers Cranberries LLC, and then Johnson Cranberries Limited Partnership. So once we have to eliminate that separation of ownership, so there won't be interior lot lines with setback requirements.
And the application is from both entities?
Correct.
Have you filed abbreviated notice of intent with the Conservation Commission?
I believe we have... We have an order of... We have an order of conditions for the project.
That's... That would make it satisfactory.
Yes.
I also noticed you didn't calculate the upland and wetland areas on the survey.
We did not.
There's no delineations on the map. It looks like the...
I don't see any of the wetlands delineated on the map either. But in what we're dealing with here, and this is not going to be buildable property, right? Buildable lots?
Correct. We need a substantial amount of zoning leave to make them buildable other than for solar and agricultural.
All right.
And all of the lots have that designation. I should have not build a lot without further zoning relief.
In this particular instance, as these are going to be not buildable lots, I think the board can waive the requirement for the upland. But again, it's up to the board. For breaking the areas up into the uplands and the wetlands, and the delineation of the wetlands, which should have been on here also, as I know it's been through the ANOI process, you have an order of conditions, it should have been on the survey map. All right.
So they already have a project in place on this property, correct?
This is Fuller and Fuller Street.
That's correct. Sorry.
I believe that we approved...
I was going to say, they already have an order of conditions from us as well, then.
Yes, and I believe we approved it on lot two. Is that correct? The solar?
Yes.
All right, so given that you guys are going to be doing away with lot lines and combining the lots under a single ownership in order to eliminate the setback requirements between the lot lines and whatnot, is there going to be... Do you have a modification application?
I'll have to check. I think it's actually, what we're proposing is consistent with the approval of the project, is my understanding, but I will have to confirm that. I think the project assumed this would happen.
Because it would appear that lot one would be ineligible as it wouldn't contain frontage for solar.
We have an access and utility easement, so that the access rights are sufficient without frontage.
Oh, that would be for parcel E or lot two, but there's no easement for lot one.
It actually extends to the... Furthest to the left, it's off-site.
That should have been included in the site plans.
It was in the site plans, yes.
It's not in...
It's not part of the A and R.
Right. Now, lot two, if it's under a different ownership, is not going to have the 150-foot required frontage. That's where... That's my point in this, because it looks like you have an easement deed for 24-foot, maybe 30-foot road coming in, and that might have been waived by the previous board in regards to lot two, but lot one doesn't have that waiver if you're separating them. So there would be no frontage area in this if it's under separate entities.
I wasn't aware that you required frontage for solar, though.
150 feet, same as everything else. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bott.
Well, I just want to sort of refocus the board's focus. So this is not a solar project.
Right, right.
This is an A and R.
No, no.
And the responsibility of the board is, if it constitutes a subdivision, then the board will declare it a subdivision. If not, the board will endorse the plan within 21 days and may put whatever note they would like on the plan.
Agreed.
So the plan has well noted that these are not buildable lots without additional relief.
Yes.
The project has been approved less before the board is an A and R to remove those lot lines between the parcels.
Yes, and I think the proponents should fully understand the procedures and what's going on with this, so... All right. Any further questions from the board? Then the chair will accept a motion to reconfigure the lot lines of assessors map 48, lots 2, 6, and 7. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong line. Assessors map 50, lots 3, 8, 9, and 10A, as an approval not required with the terms... With the statement, lots one, lots two, it's only the two lots?
Correct, and the remaining land.
Are not a building lot without further zoning relief.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gatski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is also an approval not required. The plan shows a reconfiguration of lots, and lots shown without adequate frontage are designated as being not a buildable lot without further zoning relief. Assessors map 48, lots 2, 6, and 7, located at 204 Plymouth Street, zoning residential agricultural.
Good evening. Gregory Sampson, Wumblebon Dickinson for the applicant. This is a very similar, same applicant, different property, same status of the project with a... And same rationale for consolidating some interior lot lines.
And also under multiple ownership?
Correct. We have Northwest and Cranberries, Inc., and we have a portion of land is owned by Eric in Elaine Weston.
All right, and we have applications from both owning parties?
Correct.
Again, we run into the same problem with this one. The wetlands haven't been delineated. I believe this has already been approved for solar, and part of that solar is dependent on the existing frontage of lot one, and once lot... I'm sorry, the remaining land, a portion of 48, too. Once parcel A is removed from that, it creates a problem for the board because parcel A is where the solar is, correct?
Correct.
Parcel A will no longer have... Meet the frontage requirements. And it will, at this point, I'm not entirely certain how this would go forward because it would invalidate the permit. I'm not entirely certain, Mr. Bott. Because there's some confusion here, because when the lots are separated, if they move to a different ownership?
So once again, under Massachusetts general law, chapter 41, section 81P, the plan comes to the planning board. The planning board's option is to, if the road has... If it's on a public way or a way created under subdivision control, the board's options are to endorse the plan if it doesn't show a subdivision. So...
But the issue here is they're subdividing the land to pull the solar off of what gave them the right and the access to do the solar, and that's subdividing out of an already approved permit, so...
And an A and R plan typically says and typically states that this is not for the purposes of zoning. If they're unable to get a building permit because of what they've done, then that's going to be their problem when they go to pull a building permit. But the requirements of the board under 4181P is if it doesn't show a subdivision.
Well, again, this is a subdivision because it's separating...
A subdivision is a technical term in Massachusetts where someone comes in to create a road to create additional parcels. In the absence of a road, in the absence of creating access to other properties, there's no subdivision. Dividing lots, creating additional parcels, unbuildable parcels, are all fair game under A and R plans, and the applicant is always at their peril when they move their lot lines around. But the nice thing about an A and R plan is they don't come with any sort of lockout. They don't come with any sort of prejudice. If, you know, you were looking to fund the town's coffers, you could come every week with an A and R plan for the same property. It'd be very annoying. Don't, please. But, you know, if this is what they're asking for and it doesn't dictate a subdivision, then the board should endorse the plan.
Mr. Shea, if I could also offer it... We'll absolutely... I'll bring the concerns back. We'll discuss and we'll coordinate with the town to make sure that nothing we're doing with respect to the A and Rs has any effect on the project approvals. We'll work with Mr. Bott's office, too, to confirm that, but the endorsement of the plan themselves does not... We don't have to record them. We don't have to abide by them. We don't have to take any further action on them. So I will bring those concerns back.
All right. That's... All right, because again, you should know as much as possible in regards to this.
Understood.
Questions from the board?
Just as a reminder, these A and Rs, they lock these properties for zoning bylaws and whatnot for three years. So something else to consider.
I expect that's why they're going for an A and R and not a X81, 81X.
That was a factor at one point, to be honest. You know, we know what happened at town meetings, so we're aware of that, you know, that protection is not as much of a concern as it was three weeks ago.
Okay.
So these applications came in prior to town meeting?
Yes, sir.
I don't think that would change anything that we're deciding on here tonight.
I beg to differ. We made some significant changes to bylaws regarding batteries and things like that, and with this coming in beforehand, it locks them into the previous zoning bylaws.
And that would have to be done under a special permit, if I'm not mistaken?
With this board.
Yes.
If someone was to come and apply for something else.
Yes.
All right. All right, the board will accept a motion to approve the reconfiguration of the lot lines with the notation that lots one and the remaining land of 48, 7 are not to be considered a buildable lot and the notation of prior approval in regards to the permits for lot one.
Was the last part, I got not to be considered a buildable lot?
Not to be considered a buildable lot and that... I don't know how to put it. The board has concerns in regards to the separation of this and prior approved permits, because it appears that it would be a subdivision of land. But the board will accept the motion to approve the reconfigurations of lots with lot one and the remaining land of lot 48-7 to be considered not buildable lots.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Discussion amongst the board. All right, again. Again, let's keep that in mind, that... So, Mr. Deion?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Our next order of business is approval not required. The purpose of this plan shows a lot division along existing roadway and no new roads to create. Assessors map 55, lot one, located at Purchase Street, residential agricultural. Do we have anybody here? Do we have anybody here? If you would introduce yourself?
Yes, sir. My name is Chris Micho. I work for Control Point Associates, a surveyor.
Thank you, and what are we looking at here?
Division of land through A and R.
Have you filed an ANOI through the Conservation Commission?
I would have to follow up with the engineer on that one.
Again, it's, it's the same concerns as previously noted. You haven't identified the areas of wetland delineation according to the ANOI, and you haven't separated the the upland and lowland in the lots.
The wetland area is delineated on there.
The, that was, and that was approved through?
That was a previous A and R that was on file.
Through a previous A and R?
Yes. I think it was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen?
It should have been, should have been updated in the ANOI. It appears that none of these lots have access to any buildable portion of the lot.
They do along Purchase Street. The only one that doesn't was the one up in the upper left, the land along the road was sold out, but it retains access easement.
Lot One? Or, because what I'm looking at is a cranberry bog covering the frontage more or less of Lot One, Lot Two, and for all intents and purposes, Lot Three, because it encompasses this little tiny sliver across, across the back of it, so.
Yeah, lots one through three have access off of Purchase. There is Lot Four that has been separated from the.
Well, Lot Ones clearly, and Lot Two and Lot Three all have illusory access, there's access on the roadway, but there's no way over through those cranberry bogs, correct?
Correct, so the purpose of this is to create non-buildable lots, they're not for the purposes of houses.
Okay. Questions from the board? All right, the chair will accept a motion to approve the A and R for a division of land along Purchase Street, assessors map fifty-five, Lot One into four lots, all of which are to be considered non-buildable lots and the notation that frontage is illusory should be included in that.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Discussion amongst the board. Again, Mr. Bott?
Just so I'm clear, I have division of land on Purchase Street into four lots, all considered non-buildable, where the frontage is illusory?
Yes. I think, I would think that would be sufficient, but the board may have other concerns. Further discussion?
Yeah, with, with regards to the motion, creating the, if you follow everything with regards to Lot Three, Lot One, Lot Two, they all come down right to Purchase Street. Lot One having ninety-three, Lot Two with a hundred and fifty feet, and Lot Three having a hundred and sixty feet. The only thing that would be Lot Four without any type of frontage.
Yes, Lot Four has no frontage, and the frontage for all the other lots is illusory, illusory. There's a, there's no access to the building sites from the frontage, which would make all of those four properties not buildable.
Well, I, I think I may have to disagree. The, again, along Purchase Street, you've got a hundred and sixty feet for Lot Three. Yeah, we've got a big, we've got a big cranberry bog in there and stuff like that, but there is a, there is easement access through there, and there is other, I mean, looking at the, looking at the map above, the rest of it has, I mean, Lot Two is a little on the sketchy side, once you get past the, once you get in, once you get past the.
Two cranberry bogs?
The, the bend.
Lot?
We go up from Purchase Street.
On Lot Two?
Yep.
This is a cranberry bog, and this is a cranberry bog. Is it, is it not identified? Is that not a cranberry bog, two cranberry bogs in the?
Yes, they are.
That is what that is, is cranberry bogs?
Yes.
And you can see that a larger, one from Lot Two, completely crosses the small area where the access easement is.
Okay, yep, yep.
And then.
All right, we'll draw my disagreement.
All right. And again, that's, that's why we require ANOIs that would typically show all the wetlands and the features there. All right, motion to approve with the notation of not to be considered buildable lots as the front, the frontages deemed illusory by the planning board is the motion on the table.
That's a bend, seconded?
I believe Mr. Robinson made it, Ms. Sordillo seconded it?
KRS move, yes, seconded.
So, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next order of business is an approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to divide the existing lot shown as five dash zero, assessors map seventy into Lot One, Lot Two, Lot Three, as shown here on. Zero old Center Street, zero Center Street, zoning residential agricultural. All four of these lots have frontage and have the minimal requirements. I'd please if you would introduce yourself?
Good evening, I'm Bernard Parati, a surveyor with River Hawk Land Survey.
Just tell us what we're looking at?
Oh, yeah, we're going to take the existing lot shown as assessors map five dash zero and create these three lots out of that single lot. There's currently no structures on the site, and the wetlands have been delineated and approved by the Conservation Commission.
Excellent. And I see you've got your upland area, but it should also include the wetland area in that, too, but neither here or there, it seems you have frontage, access to the buildable portions of lot, and sufficient land. Questions from the board? Seeing none. The chair will accept the motion to approve the A and R for Lot five point zero, assessors map seventy into Lot One, Two, and Three, as shown here on. And that we, we make no claims as to the buildability of these lots.
I'll make it.
Correct.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo?
Second.
Was that?
Second.
Mr. Gasky? Discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is a minor modification request by Cranberry Point Energy Storage, LLC for a site plan modification and a special permit extension request thirty-one rear Main Street, assessors map sixty-one, Lot seven dash zero, zoning residential agricultural. Pardon? Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go through, get some information here, and then we'll see where we're at. All right, Mr. Bott, we received a letter from Town Council in regards to this.
Correct, it should be in your packets.
Yeah. And if you could introduce yourself?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Dan Bailey. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Pierce Atwood in Boston. I've got several members of the Plus Power team here with me tonight, including Allison Sand, Chris Quaranta, Steve Barna, Ben Weisel, and they're here if you have any questions. We were last here, Mr. Quaranta and I were here four weeks ago with updated plans, went through those. The board had requested a site visit, so Chris hosted a site visit for all members of the board two separate times, but everybody got into, into the site to take a look. We have no new information to present tonight. And what we respectfully request is that you vote on, on our two applications, but we're also happy to answer any further questions that you might have.
Thank you. It says, good cause, it's gonna come up, if you could.
Certainly, well, and I can start, but I think maybe some of the Plus Power folks can explain this better. But the good cause, as I, we talked about the first night we were here, is that the project has to go through a proceeding with the Energy Facility Siting Board in Boston, and that hearing has closed, and we are awaiting a decision, we expect that decision sometime in June. But the EFSB asserted jurisdiction over this project after we had obtained the initial special permit, and that process is a long one. Any more details? Okay.
Have we heard back from the building commissioner, Mr. Bott?
We have not. He works part-time, I'm within today. He and I have discussed this quite a few times, I won't speak for the building commissioner. But based on the record and what I put into the draft decision, you know, it's, it's fairly clear that they are not in a position to execute their permit until, through, through the EFSB. So they've been through this process, as I noted in my draft decision. Energy Facility Siting Board began its hearings scheduled for three days in October nineteen, twenty twenty-two. To date, no decision has been rendered by the EFSB. The planning board's initial meeting to discuss this request on March fourteenth was canceled due to inclement weather and rescheduled to March twenty-one. March twenty-one meeting and continued until three twenty-eight, twenty-three. Two sidewalks requested by the planning board for three thirty-one were attended by Planning Board member Shea, Dion Sordillo, and Associate Member Williams. The four, four twenty-three sidewalks attended by Planning Board members Gasky and Robinson and the town planner. Due to town meeting scheduled for April eleventh, the planning board's regularly scheduled meeting date was continued until April eighteenth. However, due to a posting error around the Patriots Day holiday, the April eighteenth meeting was canceled and rescheduled till April twenty-fifth. So we've been at this for a bit, having this discussion, those folks have as well. And so that is their explanation for good cause. And if the planning board has concerns about that, they can certainly ask the building commissioner for his opinion.
Well, I think, according to Ms. Quesal, it says unless the building commissioner determines there is good cause for the permit not to have been exercised. So we have to wait for his recommendation, is that, that's what I'm, the way I'm reading this?
I think that is the certainly cleanest, clearest way to make sure that the board's comfortable with, with that.
And if he feels there's good cause, then we set the terms of the extension?
Correct. I think what they've asked for an extension for is to, to date certain two years at the time till thirty-first of March twenty twenty-five.
It's my understanding that they'll be ready to start work at the end of July? That?
That is our hope, yeah, yeah, when EFSB is done.
So I would, I would think that a two-year extension wouldn't be necessary, but again, we have to wait for, to hear from the building commissioner as to whether he feels it's cause before we make any determination on that. Please?
You know, I, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage here because you're reading something that I don't have.
Let me, let me just read it, so, this is from Town Council. "I found no regulations that allow the filing of an application for an extension to freeze expirations, and therefore, without an extension in hand by three thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, in my opinion, an extension is no longer, no longer available unless the building commissioner determines there is good cause for the permit not to have been exercised," and she refers to Windrock Trust Company, LLC versus Zoning Boards of Appeals of Lincoln. And, so we can't, because the date has passed, only the building commissioner can determine whether good cause has taken place?
Well, I'll.
But please, you're here.
I think you can do it, too, but, you know, you've got a letter from Town Council, and I've been doing this long enough, so I'm not going to talk you out of it. When you have something from Town Council, I'll, I'll respond myself.
Right, I, I, I'm not expecting there to be issues in regards to it because.
I understand.
You've been shut down, but under the advice of Town Council, the way I understand it is the building commissioner, unless the building commissioner determines there is good cause for the permit not to have been exercised, which I don't see as an issue. But again, I'm not the building commissioner, so.
Yeah, and respectfully, I would disagree with Town Council about your ability to act here, particularly under the circumstances that we've had, because delay, any delay here has not been by the fault of the applicant.
Well, you guys went very quick on filing for an appeal, I believe you, when did you file for an extension on the?
February? February fourteenth.
When did we first hear of it?
Well, we typically run these things through boards, so the. So the interesting thing about February is we had a town meeting coming up. So we typically schedule those things out for three weeks in order to get them through various bodies to take a look at those things. So with town meeting and the hearings we had for March 4th and 5th, we put it on for the March 14th hearing, which we didn't have because of the snowstorm.
And then that pushed it out to the 21st.
Yeah.
All right. I will... I would like to hear what the board thinks.
Well, it seems the onus has been on us for the canceled meetings, or I mean, beyond our control, but certainly on our side of the equation.
I, I agree with you, Don, that we took the application, we started the process, and due to a variety of circumstances, it's already April.
I have a question that's come up a few times. What is the actual distance from the last battery pack to the elementary school? I've heard miles, and I've heard two feet. I mean...
Per Google Earth, per site measurements, it's about 4,000 feet.
We can't, not at about, but a more...
If I may? So at town meeting, when this question came up, when someone said it was 1,000 feet away, I had the laptop and used the GIS and took a couple of points, say, from this corner to this corner. And 3,100, 3,477 feet, depending on where you drew the line from.
So we have a number instead of a range from one side to the other side?
Yeah, so essentially, like I said, in a crowded meeting room, in a laptop, in order to, if the question came up, that's when I...
There's no scale on Google Earth.
Well, that's why I used the GIS. So approximately 3,500 feet.
And one other question is training with the fire department. Could one of these battery packs, or a mock-up of one of these battery packs, actually be placed at the fire station? I don't know whether they make such a tool instead of having to chase up to the woods. If they're gonna be training, do they make mock-ups, the simulators of one of these and park it out behind the fire station? Just out of curiosity.
That could respond. So want me to invite you?
Yes.
Just...
Chris Quaranta, Northbridge, Massachusetts. To answer your question, typically, this sort of training would be a combination of training in a classroom environment, going through the technical requirements, would be coordinated through the department and their training officer and their team, and then would include a component that would be brought onsite to the equipment. However, given that there's already, I believe, somewhere around 15 megawatts of energy storage in the town of Carver, given that, again, not to speak for the fire department, but their officers have been through NFPA training, considerable safety training around lithium-ion batteries and battery systems, and given that they have experience to the working equipment already in the town, I would expect having something in place in their facility at the station for them to look at. It would be no different than a cardboard box or a steel box. It's really an enclosure that electronic equipment and batteries are installed in. It's not gonna offer them any advantages for, to be there versus them to get the classroom training and to come to the site to actually see the dynamics of the site, see how far away it is from the roads, see how it's not visible, see where it is, how to access it, safety mechanisms, emergency response plan, access to the gates, all that sort of detail.
So they'd be better off onsite than a cardboard box?
In my opinion, yes. I don't wanna speak for the fire department, but yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Please?
So Assistant Deputy Chief Boyle did provide correspondence to the planning board on Cranberry Point Storage, March 23rd, 2023. Deputy Chief, Assistant Deputy Chief Boyle notes, "One, roadway and site access changes as a result of a reduction in the number of battery enclosures and relocation of enclosures. Proposed changes are an improvement over the approved design and meet or exceed the existing requirements of the Carver Fire Department and NFPA 855. Two, changes from Tesla Megapack 1 to Tesla Megapack 2 XL and subsequent progression in cell chemistry from NMC to LFP. As stated in the initial site plan review comments from the Carver Fire Department in 2018, changes in battery chemistry were anticipated and unexpected. The modification to LFP cells signifies an advancement in cell safety compared to NMC. The standards and requirements established in NFPA 855 and UL 9540A continue to be met or exceeded and the changes approved by the Carver Fire Department. Three, training. Original Carver Fire Department site plan review comments require training as provided by the applicant. The training has already begun with the establishment of the site ERP, Emergency Response Plan, and HPA Hazard Mitigation Analysis, but will continue until the site is operational. The Carver Fire Department will conduct its own training with in-house trained and certified instructor once the site is fully commissioned. The Carver Fire Department is not object to any of the proposed changes listed in the 214-2023 Site Plan Modification. Past comments from this department regarding the project are still in effect. This letter is not meant to replace any previously approved or agreed upon condition." Thank you, Jesse Boyle, Assistant Deputy Chief.
I have received a couple of letters here. One from Dan Farini, 84 Fosdick Road, Carver. I believe that's been disseminated to the board?
In everyone's package, yes.
All right. That should be entered into the record. I also received a personal letter here, which covers much of the same topics, but because I'm the only one that got it, I would like to read it in the record and provide a copy afterwards. Dear Canelia Shea, Chairman and Planning Board Members, I'm writing about the site plan minor modification and special permit extension request, 31 Rear Main Street. I strongly oppose to the change request that is being submitted as a minor change to the site plan. These things listed below stand out as a major change. Number one, change of battery type and model. Number two, change in the number of, in the number or battery installations to be installed. Three, previous approved locations for battery installation systems. Four, emergency access lanes have been changed along with entrance points of these. Five, substation changes to equipment type, size, and design. Six, sightline location, including fencing location changes and emergency access to the same have been changed or denied. I'm gonna read that again. "Including fencing location changes and emergency access to the same have been changed or been denied. Number seven, within the footprint of the project, complete layout design has changed from the previous approved design. Each one of these items presented would be a major change, but when they're all combined, there should be no doubt this is classified as a major change from the original site plan. Sincerely, Mrs. Pratt, 284 Meadow Street, Carver." And again, this will be put into the record. This isn't the public hearing, but I will allow questions of a technical nature to be asked. If anybody has technical questions, I would strongly recommend that you ask them now.
I have a question.
Hold on one second. Do you have a technical question?
I'm not sure what you would consider a technical...
I'm gonna have to ask, Chris, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have to ask the young lady. Oh, no, the young lady can use this microphone over here. You just have to identify yourself, please.
I can move if you want to.
No, no, thank you, Chris. Somehow we managed to have more microphones.
Nice, thank you. I'm not sure what you would, I'm Karen Lapham from 67 Main Street, so I'm really concerned.
All your questions are gonna have to miss through me.
Oh, I apologize. So I'm Karen Lapham from 67 Main Street. I'm not sure what you would consider a technical question because I consider the whole change of everything technically different. I'm sure we all know, if we look up the word modification in the dictionary, it's, these, this is just not a slight modification. It's, are you selling yellow apples or are you selling red apples? There's a huge difference about what's being presented before us. This is the property I walk my dog on, I walk my dog out behind this property.
I understand, but you have to keep it technical.
I don't know, even looking at this map of how anything of this, even, they're totally different, they're totally, everything about this is different, like the other people have said, and I'm sorry, I really meant to put something forward. My dad passed away this past week, so it's been a crazy week, because I did, I did intend to put something forward and put it and write it for the board, but I just, I just wanna, you know, just give me the chance, please, to say that this is not a minor modification. There's not, it scares me, this, I stood at the town council meeting, the meeting, and I actually asked out loud, and I was told by Deputy Boyle that there is no plan that I can go and stand at the fire station and he could show me to ease my mind or ease how I feel about this being so much, if the school is .6 tenths of a mile, I'm closer to this. So there's nothing that Deputy Boyle said that could ease my mind about my safety for my family, for my children, for my pets, and the people that live near me. So I, I'm sorry, I don't consider any of this a minor modification, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lapham. The board has not decided whether this is a major or minor modification. The board has yet to vote on that, so I appreciate it. Town Council went over that on the May, I'm sorry...
March 21. 21 meetings, yeah. In the March 21 minutes.
21 meeting.
I've got it queued up, if you'd like me to read it.
Please, I was gonna, gonna look for it, so...
So in the March 21 meeting minutes, John Gasky has an issue with the definition of minor modification being an administrative issue and not a design change. Mr. Quaranta states that he will provide more detailed site plan. Chairman Shea asked Attorney Quesal what is considered a minor modification, and he responds, and she responds, "It is when the purpose of the application doesn't change, and technically, the essence of the application is not changing, but indicates that is up to the board. Mr. Bott points out the zoning regulations regarding minor modifications." And in our zoning bylaw, without having it in front of me, what triggers a minor modification are a number of parking spaces, 2,000, more than 10 parking spaces, I believe it is, I may be quoting another bylaw because they're all very similar. Number of parking spaces, 2,000 square foot of construction, which would trigger something that's beyond a minor modification. So in this case, the footprint's actually shrinking, the access is improving. So we're not expanding anything, we're not requiring any additional parking spaces. It doesn't really meet the definition of what's in the zoning bylaw as a threshold for something that's not a minor modification.
I mean, I would disagree because basically you add more batteries. So there would be like parking spot going from 10 to 20.
There's no parking spots for batteries.
Right.
Yeah, and...
And that's the way I'm looking at it. When you say there's no difference, to me there is, because you're adding more to the plan, and it's not one and two, it's more.
But you're shrinking the footprint. If someone was building a building, and they decided, "We're gonna make the building smaller," most people would say, "Okay, make the building smaller." So as I said, this is shrinking the footprint and providing better access. And it's been reviewed by Fire Department, and the Fire Department has said this is an improvement. Access is better, and we're training, and we understand the chemistry changes and may change again.
Chris, are we adding more batteries? Because it was my understanding that there's gonna be less batteries and less enclosures.
When you say battery, just let me be specific. The Megapack 1 used a cylindrical cell about the size of a D-size cell. You had thousands more batteries, technically, by the term of the definition, the technical term, in that. They had a different density, there were a different chemistry. The cells that are used in the Megapack 2 today are structurally larger, they're an LFP chemistry, they're not as dense. We're, so technically, a lot less cells. They're configured and arranged into equipment that is slightly larger by, I think it's in the dimensions, I don't have them in front of me, a couple of feet, but the overall total energy that's contained in all of that is still the same. It's still the 150, 300. So depending on where you wanna look at it, we're reducing the enclosures significantly, reducing the space they cover as well, and technically, there's a lot less cells per the definition of what they are.
Questions?
I have a question.
Please, please. No, no, go ahead.
I have a question about the battery cell. And I do know you guys keep emphasizing, very rare that battery would catch on fire. But if it did catch on fire, what can the Fire Department do to put that out?
So, sure. So with any battery, what happens isn't the same sort of fire as if you burned a piece of paper or wood, you're not doing the same sort of combustion. It's still technically, it's a chemical reaction, and putting water on it, has been proven through testing and all that detail, isn't going to stop that chemical reaction. The best approach, as Deputy Chief described, to let that fuel burn itself out. However, if you look at the basis of the LFP technology, the LFP-based chemistry goes into thermal runaway at a much higher temperature, and even when it goes into thermal runaway, it does not ignite into a flame event, the same way NMC would, with the same sort of volatility that you saw. And that's why, again, per the comments that the Deputy Chief has described, there is a lot less susceptibility to whatever you're getting to that sort of event. So if, in this case, if you had a single cell went into thermal runaway, per the UL 9548 testing results, it's not gonna do anything other than fail within that cell, within that module, and that's it. You're not gonna see smoke, you're not gonna see anything, because it's contained inside a sealed module, inside a sealed enclosure. And that's one of the big differences between the Megapack 1 and the previous technology and today. I'm not sure if I fully answered your question, or...
Well, yeah, I mean, so you're saying that the new type of battery basically isn't gonna catch on fire like the previous batteries that you submit?
Yeah, it's much less volatile. I don't wanna sit here and try and say never, it's...
Well, that's what I'm trying to think, because something will always happen, it's just when will it happen?
It doesn't mean it's gonna happen...
...that really hasn't been out there long, am I correct?
No, LFP's been out since the late, mid to late 90s.
Okay.
This technology is extremely mature. It's just not used as often because it's not as dense for cellular, for consumer equipment.
Because I do know that these batteries, you cannot put water, it doesn't really do anything, and most of the time, you gotta just let them burn out on their own.
Yeah.
There's really nothing you can do. So how long does that burn? A day, two days, three days?
Typically, I mean, even if you go back and look at the technical engineering reports for an entire Megapack 1 that caught on fire in Australia, okay, don't read the news reports that say it lasted for days, read the technical engineering report by stamped engineers, that entire Megapack enclosure was no longer burning after about eight hours.
That's my question. Thank you.
Now, I have a young lady over in the corner here that raised her hand. If you'd come up and identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Judith Pratt, and I live on 284 Meadow Street.
Oh, it's the letter from Ms. Pratt. Thank you very much, Ms. Pratt.
You're welcome. I had looked at those specs as best I could, you know, and I had a few comments or questions on that. My first one is the runoff, when there's a runoff of the, if that should occur, wouldn't there be toxic gases and fumes in that that would go into the air? And how severe and large would that be, and what kind of a threat would it pose to the public?
You're talking about a runaway thermal incident? Okay.
Yeah, so if an individual cell went into thermal Yeah, so if an individual cell went into thermal runaway, per the UL-9548 test result, I actually have the report, can I?
Yes, of course.
Give me a second. Okay. So as part of the standard failure analysis testing done by a nationally recognized testing laboratory on, starting at the cell level, a cell is caused to intentionally go into thermal runaway. That cell releases carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, hydrogen. Those three components account for 30, 77, 89% of the total volume of gas that is released. Those are pretty typical gases that are released from just about anything that burns, including your wood stove, your campfire, or anything else. In descending order trace methane, ethylene, ethene, propane, propane, propylene, one etched teteine, benzadine, tuleine at .001%, .004%, those take up the remaining. And those are all sort of chemical components, mostly likely out of the plastics itself that would be burning, which would be no different than in a residential or commercial fire of any sort. And this is, again, the technical data by a nationally recognized testing lab doing this analysis. This isn't...
Thank you. That was very good. Now, I think, and don't let me put words into your mouth, but I think she's more concerned with in a catastrophic event. What's the chance if one of them goes up, they all go up? And if all of them go up?
Yep, understood. So that's specifically what this testing does. It starts with the cell level, tests the cell. It then goes to a module. When they tested a module, they took one cell inside the module of 113 cells. They caused one cell to go into thermal runaway. It did not propagate to any other cells. They did it a second time with two cells. They went to third, fourth, fifth, sixth cell. By the time they went to the sixth cell and it was the six cells that surround a seventh cell, that seventh cell went into thermal runaway. After that, it stopped. No gas was exhibited outside of the module, I mean, outside of the enclosure or anything else. It didn't propagate beyond that. What I've described at previous hearings and in previous events here, previous hearings, if you look back into some of the stuff that's in the news and the other stories, that was the previous generation chemistry that was used, that was much more volatile. The failure mechanism that was expected there was that it's gonna create enough heat to cascade to adjacent cells and burn through that one enclosure. It still will not burn past that one enclosure and that's part of what this testing verifies that if it does fail, and the small chance that it does, anything can fail, that it's gonna fail in as safe a way possible, in a way that the fire professionals can manage it and maintain safety for the public and themselves.
Now, was that test done with seven cells or was it done with the entire 113 that comprise a unit?
I'm sorry, which one? I went through a couple just to make sure.
You said they, six cells and the seventh one in the center?
Yep, that was inside of the module. So it has 113 cells sort of arranged in a X by Y pattern. And they took cells in the middle and started forcing one to go into thermal runaway one by one until they got all six to go, that's when they got the seventh. And the criteria by the NFPA is to, once you've created a propagation, that's the test and you verify and see how far it goes. When they did that on older generation product, the NMC-based product, the entire, the entire module burned. And when they did that in the unit level test with the entire enclosure, the entire closure burned and it didn't cascade beyond that. With the LFP-based, went to that next cell and it did not propagate further, period.
It wasn't so much a catastrophic event. It could have been just like in general. And the compounds he mentioned, there are explosive things in that. And even on a smaller scale, like a normal thermal leak, it makes you wonder to what extent all this could happen. That was just one of the questions.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, now my other concern is why were so many things changed on this? And some of it sounded like they were using a lesser type of a battery, it's not as high a quality. If I can, my understanding isn't as great in that kind of thing technologically, so that's my other kind. Do you know where I'm coming from?
I do, yeah. I think it's a new generation of battery, but I will allow Chris to explain it.
Yeah, so much like in their vehicles or in many products, products improve. The product we were gonna use was the Tesla Megapack 1, it was a Tesla product. About a year and a half ago, roughly, Tesla decided to no longer manufacture that version. They didn't wanna use that type of cell anymore, they actually wanted to prioritize them for their automotive markets. They moved to an LFP-based cell. The basic enclosure stayed very much the same, the structure, what it does stayed the same, but they've incorporated a different battery, just like Apple uses different batteries in our cell phones, Dell uses different batteries in our laptops all the time. They went to this route of using the LFP. They made the appropriate changes to incorporate the LFP, but the size, structure have stayed very much the same. That product was what's now available, the original product, which actually wasn't as good as the letter from the Fire Department described, is no longer available. I can't buy it, it's been discontinued, just like an older model car has been discontinued. So we're now buying the better, newer version of the Tesla product. If I looked ahead three to five years and we were starting this at that point in time, I would expect there's an enhanced model at that point in time as well. The market is going to continue to evolve and the technology is gonna continue to improve.
My other thing was the access to emergency vehicles.
And this is just my opinion, but it's backed up by the Fire Department, it's much, much better. Before, it was very limited and the turn spaces were limited. Now, it's a much better access, but I'll allow...
No, you said it correctly. I mean, in reducing the number of battery enclosures, it allowed us to better allocate the equipment within the site where it was set. And one of the pieces of feedback was that from a Fire Department access, you wanna be able to have sort of a ability to circumnavigate as much as possible. You don't want what they typically refer to as sort of hammerhead type of application where they'd have to drive in and back out to get a vehicle out. So this allowed a much smoother access for them, allowed much smoother access to the site and also provided them with additional access through the Eversource easement on the northwest side of the project more efficiently. That access was always there, but it allowed them a better, more efficient access per their feedback and requirements on the original site plans as well.
Well, I wanna thank you for allowing me to ask my questions and talk.
I'm proud of you for taking an interest in the town and as well as everybody here. If more people showed up at more meetings, we would have a better representation.
This is what we want. We don't wanna take up the whole meeting, just a few minutes to discuss and ask questions.
I think everybody up here understands the concerns that are being presented, so...
So thank you.
We appreciate you and the questions and everybody else for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris, how often will someone come out and actually check the facility to see how it's, how it's doing?
So it'll be monitored 24/7 by an active network monitoring person. It's part of, as it is an active power plant, think of it as a power plant, it's gonna be monitored, it's just not required because it's not gas, coal, that sort of thing, have people physically there doing mechanical maintenance to it all the time. So it will be monitored 24/7. I expect in the first months, you would probably see someone here at least once a week dealing with sort of startup issues in general, you know, air conditioner issues, bugs, things like that that might come up. And I would expect sort of what they describe as sort of the bathtub curve of failures. You tend to get sort of, you know, a lot of, and when I say failures, let me please correct myself, you've got a lot of electronics in a lot of this equipment. I'm not talking failures of anything sort of the catastrophic, but just normal equipment failures and maintenance failures that you'd have on any sort of piece of electrical equipment. That stuff would happen, I would expect sort of maybe even once a week, potentially in the first few weeks as things, first few months as things are going. That would tend to probably slow out as time went on, but there would still be people available to access the site in the event of any emergency. Part of the conditions we're gonna have with the Fire Department is if an incident did occur, we would have someone available by phone within a very limited period of time, typically something like 30 minutes. We would have someone able to respond to the site typically within, I would guess, one to three hours, depending on what agreement the Fire Department and what requirements the Fire Department has. So there'd be someone that 24/7 could respond to the site. The site won't be left vacant, it's not the same as solar. There are mechanical things, there are pumps, fans, things like that, that will inevitably require more maintenance over time than, you know, a solar plant that is pretty much a static facility except for the inverters. I'm not sure if that answers your...
It does. And as updates occur, will they, will they update the facility itself?
Not the facility as a whole, I mean, you wouldn't expect they're gonna come in and replace all batteries or anything like that. But I mean, you will have, you know, modules that might have a failure for, you know, a thermal, if a thermal sensor goes bad, it's gonna shut itself down, turn off, and technicians are gonna come replace it. Things like that will happen. It won't, it's not envisioned that you come in and replace all the batteries all at once or anything like that unless there was some sort of serial defect, you know, that occurred where something was manufactured wrong. You know, you see a recall in the automotive industry, it'd be something more like that. It would be an anomaly, not the norm.
Thank you.
Questions, further questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly who to, who's to address this to, but I know in our walk regarding grading of the site and things like that, that it was, your intent was to leave everything on-site and just what, is there an application in for the ERC?
Earth removal committee?
Do you wanna comment on that?
No, because...
If you would.
An ERC, what the bylaw says is that if you have any other permit or authorization, that will serve as the ERC, you don't need an earth removal approval.
So was it by accident that your, that this project appeared on ERC's agenda?
I don't know. Yeah, don't know anything about that.
Was that recent?
Yeah, they ultimately revised it and took it off, but that's why I was inquiring as to the application as far as what you plan on doing with...
Right, the site plans are what we approved and nothing further on the site should occur without...
Exactly. And there's, and there's border conditions from the CONCOM, you know, of course, that also deals with those issues.
I have a procedural question. You mentioned that Attorney Questle has said that you don't have authority, you have to look to the Building Commissioner for the question on, I think it's the special permit. But what about site plan approval? Because 31, section 3170 of the bylaw, which is the site plan approval provision, it says site plan approval, blah, 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 shall lapse if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause. Such approval may for good cause be extended in writing by the planning board upon written request of the applicant.
Yes, but what Attorney Questle says is, I found, and I'm quoting here, "I found no regulations that allow the filing of an application for an extension to freeze expirations and therefore without an extension in hand by 3/31/2023. In my opinion, an extension is no longer available unless the Building Commissioner determines there is good cause for the permit not to have been exercised." And, and that's all we're waiting for, is a letter from him.
Yep, okay, I understand. I just wanted to make sure.
I think we can, we can deal with the minor modifications this evening, but I would not...
I...
Yeah, please, no.
I also, I believe there's also a preliminary decision coming from the EFSP tomorrow.
Well, we're gonna have to wait till our next meeting to approve any extension based on the Building Commissioner. So that's...
Are you guys aware of that?
Oh, yeah, we don't know what it is, but we just know we're getting something.
Because you were looking towards the end of, middle end of July to have the final decision by the Energy Siting Board.
Yeah, this may be an intermediate decision, you know, we just, it was, I mean, if you've seen it, it's very short, just says we're gonna make some sort of decision on this one and on another battery project in Medway tomorrow.
All right. The board will accept the motion and then we can discuss the, the issues surrounding this, so. Please, yep.
Karen Lapham, Main Street, once again. I just had a question about, you were talking about, you were talking about how they're doing the changes and that if there's a problem, that the fire station will be notified and, you know, alarms and stuff are going. I'm curious if like an alarm system like around this facility, is there gonna be a noise, is there gonna be, you know, do you know what I mean, like?
I do, I know we required a lighting system on each of the enclosures to notify if there's a problem inside, but I don't know, I can't recall off the top of my head if we required any sort of verbal alarm system.
It's not typically, it's not required by the IFC or by NFPA for that requirement and it's not, typically alarms like that are in place to get people to evacuate from an enclosure. You're not evacuating from an enclosure here. If something happens, it's not man, you know, it's not containing people or enclosing people, there's nowhere for, no need for them to escape from that facility due to an electrical fault or anything like that. So there's no mechanism of that nature, part of the equipment.
So there's not an alarm system that these residents that are within 50 feet of this unit...
It's, yeah, it's not like the nuclear power plant where...
Well, I, I'm just concerned, I wouldn't want...
No, I understand, yeah.
I also wanted to touch based on this article that I read actually just today that talks about seven things you need to know about safety in lithium ion batteries. And this was actually, you talked about the Australia fires and it talked about that, you know, not enough is yet known about the probability is lithium ion batteries failure. The mechanisms, their mechanisms of failure are potential and for consequences, as anything is, we do know that.
Yes, but we, if, wait, one second, one second. It's my understanding that lithium ion is not being used any longer, that we're using a...
So none of these components are similar, would have any type of the same kind of problem?
I can't, I can't say that, but I, I don't believe, are we using lithium? I thought we changed to NFPs.
Yeah, let me go back, it caused confusion in the last hearing too. Lithium ion is a generic term used to describe, I think somewhere in the, 15, 18 different types of chemistries that are enveloped under that to date. So we are using a lithium ion, which is still different, as I think the chief talked about at town meeting, from a lithium metal battery, it's completely different. These are lithium ion, they don't contain lithium metal. We are using a version of the lithium ion chemistry called LFP. Previous installations that you've seen, including the Victorian fire in Australia, had cells that were NMC, nickel metal cobalt. That's not this chemistry type that's being used in the equipment that's being planned for this project.
Would the, would there be, would there be toxic gases in this LF, LF, LLF, excuse me, are there toxic gases in this?
I think you just went through the list of toxic gases, yes.
Yes.
So there's toxic gases in this as well though?
Carbon monoxide, yes.
Yeah, right next door to my house. So there's similar component, they're different components, but they could still have the potential same effect. Because you keep kinda trying to make this sound like these are so much better, but there still seems like there is still, if there's a failure on it, you know, are we putting it out with water, which they're saying, no, we shouldn't dial, we shouldn't be doing that at all. You know, these battery, high exposure to thermal temperatures... You know, these battery, high exposure to thermal temperatures, you know, they're saying actually from examples of being left in a direct sun for long periods of time, and I just feel like no matter what, you're still taking something that has a totally different component, but you're telling me it's still just as, it's still, you're telling me just now it has highly toxic gases as well, so...
I believe anything that burns produces toxic gases, including your wood stove and your campfire.
You know, it's strange because I did, I did have a battery break on me a few months, a year or two ago, and the toxic smell and fumes that stayed in my garage for weeks, like I was almost to the point of calling the fire department because I thought this little battery that was smoldering and the toxic stuff is still on my driveway, is just there, so...
Was that a lead, lead acid battery, or...
I'm not sure. It was my cellphone. My cellphone fell and broke, and just the way that it broke, and I still have this crumpled up pile of stuff that's escalated onto the ground. If my, if you open my garage door, it's right there. And I just, my house and my garage smelt for weeks. So I couldn't even imagine if there was anything catastrophic that happened over there, what would happen to anybody in the direct area. And I don't want to waste the board's time and go back and forth and sit here and read all this documentation about the Australia fires and you trying to make it sound like it's a totally different thing, because it's not. And this here actually is written, it was just written the 23rd of March, so I don't find anything about this safe. I'm very nervous about it, and thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
How, how close is the nearest house? 50 feet? I think she said her house is 50 feet.
I think she was being hyperbolic. But she's, no, it's been 50 feet, but she's, her house is close, to my understanding.
All right, well, 50 feet is...
Well, no, uh...
It's a statement before the board, 50 feet is inaccurate.
Well, we took the site walk and...
I didn't, I didn't see a house within 50 feet.
No, no, not within...
I thought it was a different meaning, property, these properties are 50, 50 feet from their property, so not necessarily their actual house, but how big is someone's house lot over there on Craig Street or the roads that parallel to that, so I'll retract that. If you want to...
Thank you, no.
Just wanted to make it clear, I wasn't, I took the walk, too, and it's like, I don't remember a house that close, so I'm making sure.
I have a question.
Please, if, you'll have to, I, I, I'm sorry. You just have to identify yourself first.
First time ever doing this. My name is Pat D'Angelo and I live at 19 Craig Street in Carver. I could, we could possibly be those people that are X number of feet away. Now, this has been going on for a few years. I still don't know how many feet away we are. Nobody has ever approached us, going back a few years when they said the closest neighbors got letters. We never got one, and neither did my next door neighbor. So I would love to know what you learned on your site walk that you suggested. Each meeting we come to, we just hope to learn more and more. I don't like what I've seen or heard or learned, and I'd love to know how many feet it is from my back door. It's very close. We've spent a lifetime in that home, chose to retire there, and this is what we're facing. It's difficult. You people don't live close by, but it's right in my backyard.
Through me, through me, Ms. D'Angelo, thank you.
Thank you.
So how close is the nearest property from this?
Do you want to give the exact?
Hi, Allison Sand with Post Power. From the western fence line, which is on the map, you can see where the Eversource switchyard will be located. From the western fence line of the property, the closest residence is about 400 feet to the west, so past the transmission corridor.
Were those the ones that we could see from the power lines?
Yes.
Actual building or what?
The buildings.
Which street was that?
Yeah, which, which street was that?
Sorry, there was a house visible at which street?
Yeah, I think the closest residence is actually not quite visible from the transmission corridor because it's forested. There is, there are homes further north that were probably, Chris, I don't know if you recall...
The one you said in that corner from the...
Craig Street is the...
Yes, Craig Street.
Yep.
How far is that? How far is that?
The, the house on Craig Street, which is the closest residence to the, the project area, is about 400 feet from the western fence line of the property, or sorry, of the project area.
Was that that brown house that was, I'm just trying to, I know you had one on the right-hand side, then you had that one house that was...
What she's talking about is this is that western fence line here.
Yeah.
And we were standing sort of up in that easement under the 345 KV transmission line. It's the house that's sort of directly across from that corner.
It's 400 feet, okay.
The one that you saw, sort of crisscross out, was further distance than that. I don't know if we know exactly, but that was further.
There's the corridor.
Could you show me, Chris, where the cul-de-sac is?
So here's the corridor.
Yeah, you mean one...
I'll bring Google Maps up.
Thank you, sir.
This is the, so this is the house that we could see that had...
I think that is actually the one.
That we had, you were able to look at, see the back of that.
Please.
Everything else is forested.
Right, because they could have tapped the lines right there.
Right.
And there was, of course, it's on, yeah, the rest was on easement, yeah.
Right.
I see it. Yeah, no, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, of course, it's on.
So this is sort of the project area here. The one she's, Allison referred to is right here, sort of has the view to the back edge of this transmission easement with the 345 KV lines on.
You said, buddy, right above your hand, is that great street?
This is Craig Street, right here. Yes.
Okay, so where that cul-de-sac is?
There's a cul, I think there's a cul-de-sac right here.
That's, yeah, that's where your house is, and the house to, your neighbor would be the one that would be considered the closest.
The one that's face on?
Yeah, to the...
Right to my right.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're looking at your street, it would be to your right.
Okay, I'm on the right-hand side of the cul-de-sac, so...
If you're, when you're going into the cul-de-sac, you're on the right.
I'm on the right.
Yeah, so when you face out, it would be the house to your right.
Okay, so both our yards border it though.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Chris, if you could tell, show us where the defense changes were. I know we changed from access...
So nothing on the perimeter changed. What changed was, you know, originally we had this sort of joint access inside the fence line, and Eversource essentially said no. We added such that you could get in one main gate and get to either side. They did not want that, they wanted an exclusive gate for their own access, and so that's what was modified sort of up in that corner.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. And what, what kind of clearance does, is required from the outside of that fencing?
For Eversource or in general?
In general.
I think typically NFPA 55 would require 10 feet, if I remember correctly off the top of my head.
Outside of the fencing?
Outside of the fencing.
And is the fencing all the way to the perimeter?
The fencing is the perimeter. It's all on the perimeter.
Well, of, of the, of the whole lot, I mean...
Yeah, the whole lot would be, this whole lot will be done in fence. So the two things that are outside of the two infiltration basins, those are the, those are, actually, no, those are inside the fence, too. I'm sorry. All of that is in fence. The fence line is basically the property lease line of the entire site.
All right.
Hello, my name's Frank D'Angelo, 19 Craig Street, and I have a question, but hopefully you can answer. What happens to these, are these units in a heated environment?
You're going to ask me?
Are these units in heated environment?
The enclosures are climate controlled, yes.
There.
If they're under four feet of snow and sub-zero temperatures, it's not going to affect them at all?
No, it's not. And if it did affect any of the airflow into the equipment, the equipment would shut itself down and not operate any further.
Okay. Second of all, say it is under four feet of snow, is the town going to plow these access roads constantly?
The owner is responsible for access per the fire department.
And be done constantly?
Whenever there's snow that needs to be plowed, yes.
And, as long as...
It's a requirement.
As long as we have that, that question out there, where, where do you propose to put the snow removal?
So I'm not, I want to say, did we deal with this? Did we deal with this? I don't think we did. I expect it's going to be plowed adjacent to and within sight around equipment. If equipment needs access, it would be shoveled individually and would be on-site. There's no plan to remove it from site unless, I guess, we were into an extreme sort of event.
Well, I'm, I'm asking because you've got the U-shaped access points there, and it continues around to the other side where you were going to put the snow, because it looks like that's a lot of wetlands in there.
Those are all 65 feet from the actual wetland buffer, but I would expect it's just plowed through with either V-plow or angle plow, and then access to the actual equipment would only be done if needed. It's not, you're not going to go in and shovel the entire area out.
Right, I bet you're going to shovel the points around the battery containers for the fire equipment, correct?
The road, not the equipment itself, yes, yes.
And that lease, that looks like it takes up the entirety of the lease. What's in the bottom right-hand corner there, the square that used to contain?
That's open space that we would use for laydown and construction trailers during construction.
And could it be used as a snow removal site?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing I was going to say is it's perfectly normal, I think, I know my town around here, that if we needed to, you could actually contract a licensed company that can remove it, too, and take it to a facility. It's not the most economical, but it can be done, too.
Right, right, but if you have area, it should be designated as the, the snow removal area in this particular case. All right. Further questions from the board?
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. D'Angelo.
Thank you.
To approve site plan, minor modifications for 31 rear Main Street, assesses map, 61 lot, 7-0 residential agricultural.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. I expect due to the various changes, that we are allowed to set conditions in relation to the changes made as a minor sign of modification.
Have adventure to see.
All right, well, as long as, the last one we talked to was snow removal in the designated area. One of my concerns is nobody should be operating inside the fenced area on an individual basis, that there should be a secondary man inside at all times. No hazardous materials should be stored in greater than household quantities on the Materials, safety data sheets should be provided to all, the town planner, and all the three emergency services, the fire, ambulance, and police department. Specific emergency plans for catastrophic failure need to be provided to the fire, police, and emergency service, ambulance service. An annual inspection in person with our building inspector, and the fire department should take place during fire season, which is probably end of September, beginning of August.
That was with the building commissioner and the fire department?
I would think, yeah, to make, make sure brush fires especially aren't going to be a concern. And I would really like to see some, it's part of the original approval, but it's supposed to be screened from all public ways, and, yeah. And I don't see how you're going to get screening. When we were on the site walk, we mentioned that particular corner where the houses are, doesn't have to be tall, eight, 10 feet arboides to try and soften the visual impact on, on those particular neighbors. Further concerns?
Just one, will they have security cameras?
I, I believe we discussed the security measures due to increases of attacks on our infrastructure.
Yes, the site does have planned to be installed with both view security cameras.
So, just, can I get that first one for you about personnel?
Oh, nobody should be inside that fence alone.
Too personal.
Yeah.
It's a too-personal rule. I'm sure that's part of the...
It's already part of our safety policy, but...
I want to make sure that that's...
No, no issue.
Was the motion made in second, or?
Yes.
It was. So we're, we're discussing conditions.
Moved by Ellen, seconded by Kevin.
Just as far as the perimeter is concerned, since the fence will be the perimeter, the, shrubs should, are going to be inside, obviously.
No, there's going to be absolutely zero vegetation within the fence line. That's all part of NFPA F55. You don't want any vegetation for a whole bunch of reasons. I would probably look at...
And how we're going to do both.
I, we talked about it a bit on the site walk. I think the, given that I don't own the property, and a lot of it is Eversource property in that area, which I don't have control on, there are a number of products that screen within the fencing, you know, slatted, there's a gray mesh sort of screening that's used in substations in a lot of places. It would be that sort of an approach. It could be something that's colored, too. The only thing that I would highlight here is that piece of it I don't technically own and have control over. It is something I would have to work through with Eversource.
Right, yeah, that little corner there, right?
Yes. But there are products, there are solutions that I would expect we could...
And what's the height of this fence?
I believe, is that 10 or 12?
7'1".
7'1", 7 feet plus one foot of razor wire or barbed wire.
Now, aren't you going to have competing interests with the screening and visual for security?
It's a constant sort of debate within the utility space, and that there are products that would, you know, sort of allow them to see something up close if they had to, but from a distance sort of helps blur or sort of blend a bit. That's the other reason I sort of said that I don't have complete control over this, on that area of it, because it's Eversource's property and Eversource, or Eversource's equipment and fence.
I'm just talking, visual security of seeing intruders, if you've got it screened off, you can't...
The cameras would have access within, obviously, and see inside and see exterior perimeter, but yeah, that-
Yeah, as far as security stuff goes, they've got, there's FLIR, there's sensors. I mean, they, they've got, they've got everything necessary to be able to completely make, to, to make it look like something completely different and still be able to monitor anything that comes or goes to, down to the size of a mouse.
Infrared self-act-
Oh, yeah. I mean, and half of it, half to three-quarters of it is available to the, uh, to the public with enough money.
All right. Further questions, concerns from the board?
Concern, a couple of concerns that I have. This is, we're, we're looking to put this stuff into, uh, it's gonna be on gravel, sitting, basically sitting on gravel, but over water supply for the neighbors around there.
Go on much larger area.
Something, yeah, something were to happen, I mean, now you've, you've poisoned the water for all those residents. This is, we, we still, the technology is, is constantly changing. It's, uh... Not being totally familiar with the particulars of it, um... We really need to lean hard on the safety, uh, side of things and to protect, uh, our, to protect our residents here. Our job is, and it's in our first paragraph, is to protect citizens, protect the wetlands, protect our resources. We're, we're the, we're the first gatekeepers. There've been quite a few hearings on this stuff, and quite a few people have made, have provided testimony with regards to the safety of these things, especially when you get up to the size. It's, we're getting into a lot of unknowns with regards to the size. We haven't even really described, you know, Eversource hasn't come forward and talked about the expected discharge rate and how that's gonna affect all these batteries and with regards to temperatures and everything else like that. It's, those are some of the concerns that I have, and it's, uh... With regards to, uh, to safety and the health of our residents and stuff like that, it's, it's... I, I, my feeling is, on this thing, is that it's too close to, um... Historically, these things have been too unsafe to be this close to a, uh, to residential neighborhoods. Those are my concerns.
Unfortunately, we have, we have little control over that particular aspect due to the nature of the, or lack of bylaws that were in place when this was originally permitted.
And that's another one of the concerns that I have, is the, the nature of the way this was, uh, approached by the town.
All right. Last condition, non-functioning or failed equipment must be replaced or removed from site within thirty days. I expect you'll be down fixing it before that, so...
Yeah, I don't have an issue. I mean, if I had the opinion of saying something, I think you're most concerned about the battery aspect of it. If I have a failed HVAC, does that mean that has to be removed within thirty days if it's on equipment? I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, no, you are, you are correct, and it is, it is the more sensitive equipments, but to be fair, the HVAC equipment does contain chemicals and gases.
Contains the same, R134, yep, yep.
I'm not gonna jump down your throat, so-
I'm with you.
But that should have been repaired or replaced almost immediately due to the nature of the facility, correct?
The equipment would shut down, the equipment's not gonna operate. I was just kinda going to, sometimes when it's that general, if a belt goes in the air conditioner and I don't need it, that's all I was trying to, I'm not gonna worry about it, thirty days is fine, we can-
It's, it's, it's more to concern with the other equipment, but any failure should be recognized or addressed, especially if it comes to the systems that are maintaining control, like the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning.
That's fine, I'm okay with, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Devo says aye.
John Gasky says nay.
Evan Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. We will be back at our next meeting.
May ninth.
Well, we need to continue the special permit, though.
We are continuing the special permit to the next meeting until we hear back from the building inspector. It's not a public hearing, so we don't.
Need a vote on?
I, as long as it's acceptable to the applicants and it's acceptable to us, I think that's-
Sounds good, works for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is a request from JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC for a site plan minor modification, two-eight-seven Tremont Street, assessors map ninety-four, lot five dash zero, zoned general business. The old Erickson's Ice Cream is asking for a minor modification. Removing sidewalk and decreasing island. Find out about what? We can ask tonight? All right. Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name's Tom Kuzerski from Merrill Engineers in Plymouth, and I was before you previously for the review and approval of the subdivision.
It's a- Ice cream place.
I'm sorry, ice cream's, listen to what, you're right, you're correct.
I know ice cream.
Yeah, I need some ice cream right now, I'll tell ya. Anyways, for, for review of this minor, what we would hope you would consider as a minor modification. I was initially asked to do a revised layout sheet, which I did do, and I have before you. Michelle got ahold of me around midday and asked if we could possibly provide full site plans, which I did do, and I have them here, and I apologize, but I had a very short time to put them all together if I could.
Not the entirety, just more or less, what we're looking at the specific changes.
Okay, I'll give you the specific change.
So, Tom, do you wanna just use my laptop to point things out on the-
I have a pointer right here. Oh, it doesn't work on that, okay. Okay, thank you. I don't reckon on ya. Okay.
Got a giant finger there.
There you go, great. Okay, the first thing that we did is we opened up this, this part here from twenty feet to twenty-four feet to provide better fire and two-way access in here. We added, we added a space right here. We increased the landscaped area here, and we increased the landscaped area here, which provides more room for planting trees. We can put two trees in there to help shade the parking lot better. And we added a, we added this over here. We used to have the fire access here, which was previously reviewed and approved by Jesse Boyle, and then the applicant came up with the idea, if he could do it through here, this might be better for fire protection, 'cause they can get in through here, and they could also access it through here. Jesse reviewed it, and he approved it, and he likes it better. So, our plan was also to, one of the things to make things a little better for ADA access and customer access in this area here, particularly for the retail shop, is we took the handicap spaces that used to be down in this section here, and we moved them up here, and we moved the ADA accessible spaces here. And they extended the sidewalk here for easier, easier access over through here to get to the picnic area. So, that's pretty much it.
All right, so, so what are we looking for here? What are we looking at, the PU?
Excuse me?
What, what are we looking at here in the red?
Oh, those are the changes.
This specifically, which change, what change are we looking at right here?
Right, right here?
No. Right, right, right here.
Right there, that's a bigger landscape island.
Bigger landscape island.
Mm-hmm.
It wouldn't be a minor modification if you put a parking there, 'cause you're not allowed to park in front of the building.
Okay, well, that was previously approved before, we already-
It was previously approved as loading zone specifically, no parking.
Okay, then we can eliminate that.
We're still gonna maintain this access around here?
Yeah, they'll have the curbing there, but they, what they prefer to do is, is this primary route here and this primary route here, this will remain open.
So, so this, this primary route around the back here is gonna remain open?
It'll remain open.
We're gonna open this one up?
We're gonna open that one up and put the grass paper along the backside of the building that we have, which is that cell that you plant, you grow grass on it, but it's got gravel underneath it.
'Cause my concern would be that, no offense to the handicap, but the quickest to move their car out of the way there is-
Mm-hmm, correct.
...issue a problem that required, um... If that was the singular and only, only way in, if that's become the secondary opportunity way, I, I can see that.
Yeah, we have two means, Mr. Shannon.
So, you're adding sidewalk in the back, you're adding the island out towards the street. Now, where are we removing sidewalk?
We're not removing any sidewalks.
Okay, 'cause that's, the application says removing sidewalk.
No.
And decreasing island for better traffic flow.
The main, the main one, but we also added the, we added some interior islands, especially the one up top, so you can get a tree up near the main building there, I think that'd be nice.
And on the upper right-hand side, that, that square box that you pointed out, what's that?
It's a parking space.
Oh, that's a parking space, yeah, that's, I, I'm-
Okay.
I personally don't have an issue with it, as long as the fire department has the clearance.
The fire department reviewed these plans, and he feels it's an improvement over the previous one submitted.
For sure, the ability to make the, I mean, those, those, if those picnic tables went up, that, you know, one picnic table, we know at the end of the summer what's gonna happen, they're all gonna go up like matches, and that could be a problem.
Excuse me? People burn picnic tables in Carver?
You've never seen a picnic table burn?
I, no, I have not.
It's, it's actually quite, quite the sight.
But this is an annual occurrence, and, I mean, I'm just hearing you say, at the end of the summer-
Maybe, right, maybe not an annual occurrence, but I wouldn't expect it any more often than various other fires.
I'm new here, you know, I just-
What do you think happens to old-
Carver.
It's a part of Carver as much as Old Home Day.
Yeah, all, all picnic tables do not go to rest in the ground.
I just wanna know when it's gonna open.
And it's gonna most, interior.
Yeah, we'll, Jason?
All right. So, we're gonna remove the one by the loading delivery area. Other than that, I don't, I don't have any particular issues with, with what else is going on.
All right, as far as opening, I'm Jason from JCM Carver Acquisitions. As far as opening, as soon as I possibly can. I've had some setbacks with some materials. So are a lot of children, you know, relying on media for their summer work, but, um, yeah, as soon as I possibly can. This was the last piece of the puzzle before, 'cause I'm getting ready to set conduit and light pole bases, so just wanted to, I need to know where these, we're gonna set before I can start digging. Yeah.
And the front septic system's all in, the back ones in, we're gonna connect it with a pump, and as promised, you can see it's a first-class facility that's going up there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, are you losing any parking spaces?
No.
No.
Okay.
It was really just that main island out near the street. There was only twenty feet for cars to bypass.
And you're shrinking, you're shrinking that main island down by four feet.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, just to get a little bit better flow.
Which is consistent with some of the other businesses, newer businesses up the street. This is actually even, trunk is wider than some of them.
Are, are you making them each one-way, an entrance and an exit?
No, no, no.
We're gonna say each one is an in and out, yes.
Each one's an in and out, it's always been that way.
Yeah, no, no change there.
Very similar to the gas station that's in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm just curious, we, uh-
Pistachio, sir.
What'd you do with the holly trees? Were you able to save them?
I was not able to save them. I have multiple letters from ABRIS, because they were too old, too mature, and all went along, and even as of right now, I have no water on site. So, I already purchased last year, the day that they were removed, I have two that I've been babying at my own house, two new ones that I'm gonna plant for the town.
Excellent.
Okay.
Excellent. And the left island, the west side of, on the street, where the loading and delivery area is gonna be?
Signal.
You will provide screening along both of those islands in the front?
Yes.
Not, not, I'm-
There were trees there.
Right, just, it's more, you know-
There's like thirty-some odd trees that are gonna be going in.
We have a problem.
I don't wanna block out the business at all, no.
No, 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 no.
No, but we, we have a pretty extensive landscape.
It's very extensive, yeah.
I, I just wanna make sure that-
My back hurts already.
I, I don't have any further questions.
So, if I may, just to clarify, so that change that we're looking at is remove those five parking spaces and restore the loading and delivery area? No, no. One, one space, which is in the left, just that one space near the dumpster? Your signal's off, I don't know if you unplugged it.
Right, the one space, those other five were previously allowed, weren't they?
Yeah, they were allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just checking.
And you gotta put screening around the dumpster, this one's, so it doesn't look like-
I'm gonna do black chain link, black slats, and trees.
Excellent. Right, so those five parking spaces are fine?
Correct, yeah.
They were, they were previously approved, correct?
All right, and so this one over here where it says proposal, you can do- Yeah, we tried to get an extra one, but, yeah, I get it, we won't, we'll sneak that in.
There's no further questions from the board? Then the chair will accept, um... A motion to approve the request by JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC for a site plan minor modification, two-eight-seven Tremont Street, assessors map ninety-four, lot five dash zero, zoned general business, with amendments as discussed, which would, I think, there's only the parking space on-
Remove that one parking space in the loading and delivery area.
So, the chair will accept that motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gasky.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll see you at the Slum.
Yeah, I'm sure you will.
Thank you. Cannot use your position to get something the general public cannot. The public wants Grape Nut Ice Cream, they're going to, but you cannot say, I'm...
No, I would never say that.
Don't, don't go there.
Tom, are you asking us to sign our copy?
Uh, no.
No?
No, we got other things to sign, but not those.
All right, good.
Roll set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, our next order of business is a preliminary subdivision plan, Route forty-four Development LLC.
I don't believe it's on this agenda, is it?
No.
Oh, am I holding the, oh, April eighteenth agenda, so this one is removed from our agenda, we put it off for another...
They asked to come back on May ninth.
Okay, that's fine. All right. I'm going to skip to the minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The chair will accept the motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gasky. Anybody have any concerns, questions or amendments? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
I abstain, I was absent.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Our next order of business is the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of three seven twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Ms. Gasky, seconded by Mr. Dion. Further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson stands.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. We approved the minutes of three fourteen, that was our canceled one, so our next, the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Ms. Gasky. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, we're going to hold off on the four eleven twenty-three meeting minutes, because I haven't had a chance to review them. Our next order of business is town planner notes, Mr. Bot.
No specific notes at this time. We need to talk about the next two training sessions, and I'm still trying to work through the logistics of getting our friends from CPTC to come do a training session for us on special myths and variances that will invite the ZBA two and A and Rs and subdivisions.
All right. Member notes?
I would like to thank everybody who voted for me, and I hope that things continually go well and maybe even better.
Excellent. I want to congratulate Ms. Sardillo on being re-elected to her position on the board. Thank you very much, I want to thank everybody that showed up tonight. It's important to show an interest in your town politics, and I wanted to take a moment to especially thank everybody and all the members of the planning board who do a fantastic job, and this town would suffer greatly without them, including our town planner and planning department.
I have a question.
Please, Mr. Williams.
It's about dumpsters. I'm riding my bike around town and some of the, well, I don't want to mention names, but newer places, now dumpsters are supposed to be screened in, or are they on a pad or just sitting in the dirt?
They're supposed to be screened from public view if they're a permanent feature of the, of, of...
And I, I'm not sure how far back with some of the, I just said a few places that the dumpsters are just sitting on dirt in the parking lot or off the parking lots and even, well, across the street here, Cumberland Farms has a nice big fenced-in area and the dumpsters out in front of it. Because obviously, they put it inside and the trash guys just crash the fences, I mean, that's, you know, we've had dumpsters with fences, the fence lasts two weeks. It's the first time the guy comes, he's not going to open and close the gate every time.
Well, it's, it's the responsibility of...
I mean, some of the older places, I can see that they may have not been part of their permit, but I just...
It's highly, in general, I can't recall the board ever, or rarely, if ever, giving variances out for, for the dumpsters, but I know that in recent years, the board has made a more concerted effort and...
I know, the stores we had in Rhode Island, we had issues with that, they spent all kinds of money, you put the gates up, but the trash guys are not going to get out of the truck twice to open the gate, close the gate.
Right.
And they bash it in, drive away, and two weeks later, it looks worse than if you didn't have it fenced in.
Well, we had very serious concerns, especially in the past three years with vermin, and I think the town has become more aware of what can run out of a dumpster and into the ground and what that attracts and what that can do to...
Just curious.
The environment, but absolutely...
An old man riding around with nothing more to do than...
Unless they have a variance, then it should be screened from public view, as should parking areas too, but you can see that in a lot of cases, especially in older developments, and it's something that our master plan calls for, is if we allow traditional development of such a nature, then that's what we're going to get, and, and it, the master plan feels that the town wants more rural aspect to it, which is why we try and provide better screening.
The TV show, Blue Bloods, the other night was talking about city and country and that, the rat problem in the city, but, so when you come out to the country, you get bigger animals going, raccoons going in and out instead of rats, so it's, you know, country living is just as...
Oh, yeah. All right. Nope. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Don. I think that's everything, so I would, the chair will accept the motion for adjournment.
All right, and I got some my hours for you guys to sign for the A and R C two.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Gasky, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Thank you all, and thank you, Area fifty-eight, have a good night.